My computers.
Joe, you should show your hand right now.
By the clock, we'll start our regular meeting for October with a bunch of agents. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America.
And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Nathan, is anybody here with food?
Yeah.
Okay, I think we can, um, move beyond instructions. We'll start with roll call. Guy, do you wanna?
I'm your superintendent. Brent Slusser, member at large, ninety-five, Peter Drive.
Burton Elliot, Ward three, ten fifty-eight, South Clear Lake Drive.
Dan Rippey, Ward two, one twenty-six, Lakeside Court.
Molly Weber, we're at large, eight twenty-two, South Clear Lake Drive.
George Chagall, Ward one, one forty-four, West Clear Lake Drive.
Nathan Striker, Kirk Treasure, two ninety, out of guard.
Jim Hawke, Lakenzoni Administrator, one fifty-four, West Clear Lake Drive. Chris Summer, Tom Marshall.
Okay, thank you, everybody. We'll now move forward with the approval of the agenda as presented. Um, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
George, I move that we accept the agenda as presented.
This is Dan.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. We'll now move forward with the September sixteenth meeting minutes. And I think Nathan's got those up. Guy, would you mind turning this room, please? Is that at a good angle?
Yeah, I still got it.
I know I got my corrections in to Nathan. I don't know, um, if everybody's okay. I'll entertain a motion to accept the September sixteenth minutes.
I submit, this is Dan.
Thank you, Dan, and a second.
Part of your second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I understand.
Okay, thank you. Motion carries. We'll now move to the October third meeting minutes. Shortest meeting in the history of the town of Clear Lake.
This, Brent, I made a motion to approve. It was the quickest read of the minutes I think I've ever had.
We've got a motion. If I got a second?
This is Dan.
A motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none?
That's a. This reason was so short.
Yeah. No. Okay, Nathan, we'll turn it over to you to present the September, October voucher register.
Yeah, this voucher runs from, uh, September sixteenth through October twenty-second. Um, this voucher has two pay periods on it. Uh, but also have our Nitsco payment, our second Nitsco payment, um, on here as well. We did not have anything really out of the ordinary, um, on this voucher. Um, we did have four attorney bills on the bottom of the sewer side. So on the general side, I'm asking for approval of sixty-seven thousand, five hundred seventy-six dollars and fifty-eight cents. On the sewer side, I'm looking for, uh, forty-five thousand, seven twenty-eighty-three cents for a total of one hundred thirteen thousand, two ninety-seven and forty-one cents.
Quick question, any questions? Um, there is a, uh, nine hundred dollar charge for, uh, it's all, I think we have a major computer, computer problem or nine eighty, that's a monthly charge. Oh, is that a monthly? Oh, okay. My apologies. Thank you.
Any other questions for Nathan? Nathan, I would just say if we could get the corrected voucher put in the completed packet.
Yeah.
Um, because the one that's in the packet is from last month, so if they were corrected. Just so if we ever go back, we can.
Yeah, got it.
So I'll entertain a motion to approve the September, October voucher as presented.
This is Dan. And I'll make a motion to approve the voucher as written.
And a second. It's Molly Hall, second. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Okay, we will now move to leafback repair. And you think that's gonna be Guy? I don't know any.
Yeah, so my computer died. So I, this last spring, when we put the leafback away, I knew that we were gonna at some point in time need to replace the, uh, fan and the liners for it. I did not notice it when I put it away, but when I got it back out this fall to start, I looked through the top and down and I could stick my fist through the blower, so rather than waiting to, for it to fail, I went ahead and got the parts ordered before we ran, or before they ran out of stock. So I had them on hand, um. I was gone last week and hey, these were booked, so I'm gonna go up tomorrow and see if we can get it, the rest of, or get those installed this week or the first of next. So.
So no actions required on our part. You're just letting us know. Okay, thank you for the update.
Well, I, I asked him to present costs to council.
Oh.
Did actually exceed this.
Yeah, it exceeded mine.
So what is the cost?
I. Yeah. I'm going off here. It's got the. Did it get, it got put in there, didn't it?
I didn't see it. I didn't see.
I didn't see it. Nathan, do you know the leafback from?
It was, it was like, it summers from five and six.
Five and six what?
Thousand. I don't, who's it probably, do we have the invoice? Yeah, you have an invoice. I gave it to you when I came back. Can you run it again real quick? Good.
Yes. I'm not, I'm not in the packet. Who's the rock?
Um, Brown Equipment Repair.
Right, that's just the invoice for the parts, right?
Aye.
That's the invoice for the parts? And then there'll be a labor charge on top.
The labor charge won't be hardly anything, few, few hundred bucks. If the parts exceeded the.
Yes.
And we've already thought.
Yes. Because they know the half of the word, you sit and wait for those parts for a month.
Yeah, that's fine. This, it, it would have been helpful if this document was in the.
Yeah, I thought we put it in there. I must have gotten missed last week.
That's why I sent the email the other day.
Other than.
Yeah, yeah, I was a little busy last week.
Other than that, the leafback is working?
Yes, yes, we, we picked up, uh, a load week before last and we picked up one today. So.
Is the lead permitted free month at new charge this year?
Every year, every year.
Have we done this historically prior years?
This, this is only the second year for.
Second year, okay. I just noticed they're signing that Toronto Register.
So this is an invoice, it doesn't have any one.
Just as one order.
So this is Dan. I would like to make a motion to approve the, uh, invoice from Brown Equipment Company for the repair, the parts of repair we leave that. Um, it totals not to exceed six thousand.
We have a motion. Could I have a second?
This is Brent. I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Yeah, and in the future, if we could just, cause I know that within the agenda was brought up last year at the assembly meeting, so if we can just stay on it, that would be awesome. Okay, we will now move to the furnace replacement estimates. So I don't know, um, Guy, if you want to provide some context for being so our residents.
So we had.
Not getting into the estimates, but.
Okay, so, um, we had, uh, furnace one go down. We have three furnaces in the building, one, two, and three. Furnace one runs the upstairs, basically from this wall that way. Furnace two runs the basement and furnace three runs this room. Um, furnace one, the blower motor went out in so the first part of September, um, we uh, struggled to find parts. We were without AC for, what was it?
Week and a half.
Week and a half. You know, when it decided in September to be ninety-five degrees. And we thought they were able to find the parts where Sycamore was and get it back up and running, um, which was fairly reasonable, I thought, for as much as he had to go, or as much as he had to do. But he suggested that we replace the furnaces, um, in the near future, not something that needs to be done today, but it's getting their, the age of the building, so that's where this came.
To prevent the emergency from happening, for you, from you guys being out of air or heat.
The air is not my concern. We can live without air. Heat is the main concern. So.
And then they're the original equipment.
Correct, so they're. Furnace, furnace one and two are the original equipment to this building. Furnace three was replaced two-ish years ago. Or that furnace was actually added in a new AC unit, but.
Remember the temperature varied so much in this room.
Mm-hmm.
Yep. So furnace three. Let's not really, the furnace and AC run only this room?
Correct.
Okay, so that thermostat guarantees the temperature here with the door closed.
Correct.
And that one's already been replaced?
Yes.
We're referencing the other two.
We're referencing unit one and unit two.
Okay. All right, so I think, um, Nathan, we've got, um, so first of all, Guy, thank you. We've got three estimates in front of us. Councils received these and had an opportunity to look over those. We received estimates, we received one from Gibson's. If you wanna just go to page eleven, oh, go ahead.
Did you answer any of the questions? I sent you an email a couple days ago.
Oh, about, uh, citing them.
Lot of calculations.
Yes, the BTU calculations, um. The only one that I know of that said anything about doing that was Sycamore, and he said this furnaces, the way they were set up, were sufficient for what we were doing.
So did you, I'm sorry, you got a second more?
Yes.
Okay. Did you talk to any of the others?
No, I did not. The, uh, so Sycamore is the one that put this unit in. They're the one that have the units in the shop. And they're the ones that have been doing our yearly service on stuff. So that's kind of why I was leaning on them.
Sure.
I, I feel it's, it's critical for us to understand, um, the level of calculation before we select a BTU. It, it just has, um, we have the ability to buy a, a furnace that was quoted, which was significantly more than what we need, which leads to a lot operating costs, if anything, if it's less comfortable, et cetera. I think, whereas given that we're not in an urgent, uh, situation here, I think we should be smarter before making a selection and, and so I would uh, open it up for other comments before I make a motion.
Yeah, yeah, so I took a look at this too, Dan, and I, I completely agree that, uh, you know, it looks, it looks like furnace number, or system number one is not only overs, possibly oversized with the furnace, but also the AC is, is large. Um, and so I, so I agree. I also understand that having a smaller unit runs more efficiently, it is better comfort, and, uh, generally is better. So gen, most of the time is a lot of the standard things when they come in is they're gonna round down, not round up. So, yes, so first off, I agree completely. As it relates to the three bids, it's really clear that Masters is, is the one that's got the best price. I mean, they're um, eighteen percent less than, than Sycamore. Um, they also have a slightly more efficient AC system quoted, uh, and they match up on efficiency with, with, with the furnace. Uh, Gibson's is out, in my mind, is out there. High, um, less efficient, so um, it really comes down to, in my view, what I propose is that, you know, we choose to work with Masters on this, have them do the calculation. Um, my expectation, just based on experience, would be that it's likely we're gonna end up with the smaller units and even a lower price. So, um, you know, I guess if I were to make a motion, I would, if I, go ahead, I would make a motion that we uh, go with Masters on the HVA system that we, uh, ask them to, uh, do the calculations on, actually both, might as well do it on both units, um, to verify the system size.
Not to exceed?
Not, yeah, let's say what we have in front of us. Yeah, eight dollar wise.
Yeah.
Yeah, and then, since this isn't urgent, right, they can come back next meeting and we can say, yeah, we did the calc, it's this, and here's the price, and we go from there.
We have a motion on the floor. Oh.
Can we, can you hold off on the motion for a second?
Sure.
So I can make a comment, please?
Yeah, I didn't sue, sorry. It's all right. It's looking at me. Uh, yeah.
What, and I guess this is gonna go to you, Guy, and to Nate a little more, unintended consequences. We have one vendor who is currently already here, currently already doing service. We're gonna add another into the mix, so we're gonna have to have another account set up. We're gonna have, have checks going out to two separate companies. But then, would anybody be opposed to having Masters rerun their numbers?
Run them more.
Or, no, 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 no. Let Masters do it, do it, Burton, Dan are talking about with Masters. But go back to Sycamore and say, hey, you guys said we didn't need to run it. These are the specs we need to be at. Are you sure you don't wanna tighten up your quote? Cause we gotta make a decision. And then come back with the two votes. If you're giving one vendor a chance to revise it, it'd be well, is that a sticky situation?
Yeah, I guess my, the distinction I would draw is I'm not asking them to revise their price. I'm asking them to check the capacity of the units that they did, which is a different question. I also, if I had concerns about any of the other vendors, you know, I think your point is well taken, but from what I can tell, Masters is a reputable company, and, you know, for the twenty-six hundred dollars that it looks like it is right now, um, I'd probably go with them. I have no reason to believe they wouldn't do a good job for us.
Can I chime in on this for a second?
Sure.
So, I have I have a list of people that bail us out continuously. Masters, we've called them before. We've called Gibson's, we've called other people. Josh and, uh, Jono are the only two that have ever bailed us out when we were in trouble. On the heat. Heating, cooling, water, and, uh, water heater stuff.
So you have maintenance agreements with them that they come and check.
They come, Josh comes every September-ish timeframe, and he services the on-demand water heater in the barn, the furnace is in the barn, and the furnace is here.
Yeah, and that, and that makes the difference.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm, I'm sure we'll have a service agreement on whatever we get, and they too will be reactive if we have a service stall. So it's not unique to anyone. I, I know from the fact that you don't have an agreement with a, uh, heating, air conditioning, and you have a problem, you call them. It's a cold call and they'll get to you whenever they want. But with an agreement, uh, my experience is this same day or within twenty-four hours. Oh, Masters is one, a couple others around the way are just as good.
My, I, I am gonna voice because just even at a glance, looking at these, one does not scream professionalism at all, and when you're working with municipalities, I think we deserve that. Um, and if somebody has bailed us out, we also, it doesn't mean others can't bail us out and have that conversation. Um, we have to be good stewards of the money that we have. If it, Brent, I would say if it was, you know, a couple hundred dollars, maybe have that conversation, but I think based on the percentages, when we're talking this much money, I would feel comfortable going back and kind of giving them a second chance because they weren't the lowest. I have, mine can.
I appreciate that.
If we give Masters a chance to rebid it at a different furnace, we need to do the same for all three.
But if Masters is coming in at the eighty thousand BTUs, like the other two, we already have the two bids at eighty thousand BTUs from Gibson's and Sycamore.
Masters is already the low, the low price. Yeah, what's gonna happen, they're gonna be lower with a light unit, possibly. If not, they say, yeah, this hundred thousand is what we need, they're still the low price. The other thing, talking to Molly's professionalism, uh, two out of three are members of the Better Business Bureau of, of Northern Indiana, and they all have A-plus ratings. Uh, Sycamore is not even listed by the BBB, which causes me a pause as to why aren't they? It costs them nothing to be a member. It speaks volumes if you are, and if you have an A rating, it's a significant plus due to your credentials.
So, um, any more discussion? Dan, is there anything?
No.
Okay. Um, so I will entertain, um, motion.
Okay.
Oh, we have, yeah, okay. Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, let's do a roll call vote on this, um.
Yeah, roll the roll vote, uh, in in regards to the furnace replacement, um, and continuing with the calculation, is that what we're doing here? Roll call to continue with the calculation?
Calculation, uh, to, to verify size of units.
Okay. So on this issue, Brent Slusser, what's the, yeah, your name?
Nate.
Uh, Bert Elliot, on this issue, what's the, yeah, your name?
Yeah.
Dan Rippey, what's the, yeah, your name?
Yeah.
Molly Weber?
Yeah.
Yes.
And George, yeah.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody. Motion carries. Guy, thank you for getting three bids. I know that's something that we have consistently asked for, so who knows to you for securing those. We will now move to unfinished business, and we have two resolutions here. And just a reminder for council, our resolution can be passed without reading it, but the motion needs to include the title of the resolution. And Bert, I'm gonna turn it over to you to discuss the continuity of operations.
Sure, thanks, Molly. Um, and I'll just kind of tee it up, and then if there's some questions or whatever, uh, we happily answer any of the arise. Um, we've been working on this for a while, and you've been hearing the updates as we've been going. Um, and, you know, this, this came out, uh, discussions we've had with the county around being prepared in case we have an emergency, and the resolution, as it's written, kind of lays out those elements, right? And we want to be able to do, uh, perform successfully the essential functions that we need to perform as a town, um, and those are unidentified as the sewers, the roads, and the ability for us to make decisions and allocate funds and resources to do just that, right? Um, so in one sense, it's very simple, but throughout the document, it's fairly long. We just go through who's, how we're gonna make decisions, um, we're gonna be as public and open as we can. Um, and because we don't know the nature of what's gonna really hit us, um, there's gonna be some flexibility with this. So one of the things that you also saw on the packet is sort of an ongoing list of it, action items that are following from this. You could call it a lessons learned because until we started this, we didn't know we even had to do it. So you'll see things like, uh, an agreement with Fremont um, to have mutual aid. You see the radios, which I'll talk about in a minute, and other things are gonna come up as we found it. So, um, the purpose of this document then, and the purpose of this resolution, which we're asking, I'm gonna ask for, is that we adopt the resolution and this version of the document. Going forward, this document's gonna be a lot like the employee handbook, where we're gonna do ongoing resolutions if we need to make modifications as, as we go forward. Um, I, I would expect that that's definitely gonna happen. Um, and there are also gonna be, there's also coming out of this, you know, some trainings and some other things that we're gonna be doing with, with, um, well, with some of us and anyone who's on the continuity of operations team that's outlined in this document. So, um, obviously, there's a lot here. I know it's been passed around, and I've gotten lots of really good feedback from, from everyone, um, on council and, and even beyond that, with, with the, uh, the help that we've had from, um, from Stevie County. So I, I'm going to, rather than just continue to ramble on on this, I will pause here and see if there's any questions or concerns.
No, I just wanna say, great job. Um, I know I had the opportunity to sit in with, in some of the meetings and everything. The coordination at the county level, um, was phenomenal and everything you did to make this real for town of Clear Lake.
Yeah, I also, um, wanna, uh, give kudos to Bert, Bert's leadership in bringing this together. There was a lot of, uh, like you said, really didn't have anything to work from. You assembled, I think, from, from all the right spots, uh, what I thought was a cohesive plan. It's, it's straightforward, and I don't call it an easy read. Uh, and, and it was useful, um. Um, and, uh, and, uh, you got the team's inputs, you know, from the various managers, and I just think it was a, a really great product. So, thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, as you're looking at this, everybody, as I'm scrolling through, you can see it's very thorough. He did a really good job, covered a lot of stuff. So it's almost a thirty-page document, but everything is really thorough and it was a really great job.
And once this is adopted, we'll have it printed and in the office. So if somebody wants to read it, I know we have some residents in the audience that might really like to read it. Um, John Rolholt. Uh, so now we will entertain, um, Bert, I don't know if you wanna.
Sure, I'd like to, um, make a motion to adopt resolution number zero six dash twenty twenty-five. A resolution of the Town Council of the Town of Clear Lake, Indiana, adopting a continuity of operations plan.
Perfect. We have a motion. I'll entertain a second.
Stuart, I'll second the motion.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. And then it's right over.
For all heck, well, the comments are very, give it to you, tech from God.
Well, thank you.
And then you'll send it, you'll also get it to lead, correct?
Oh, yes, yes, yeah. Um, and in one of these days, you'll come by here, get to meet him. And kind of, so I have one other sort of follow-up. I am, one of the things on my list was, I, you know, during this process, we identified to be might need to communicate when we don't have cell service, and how do we do that? So, um, there's, uh, there was a one pager in the packet on an emergency portable radio system. Uh, I wanna really thank Chris Emmerich for giving me guidance. This is not something I know like anything about, um, but I tried to kind of outline, um, kind of what the key fitness for use were for it and some of the options. You know, considering the fact that this is going to be something that we're gonna have um, in various places, ready to go in an emergency, and it's not for everyday use. You know, there's no need to get a super high-end radio system, but the key thing was, was getting, uh, something that had a suitable range for it. So, uh, and then various pipes and so on. Um, but this is about a three hundred dollar decision, so this isn't gonna break the bank. I know we have money in the budget for it, but, um, you know, one of the things we're gonna do, we'll get the basic radio and then an extended antenna that Chris recommend, recommends too, that it'll just help this, the, uh,
Range?
The range, thank you, the range for this. So I don't know if anyone's got any questions on that, but, um, uh, just wanted to get, do I need to maybe ask? Uh, just wanted to get, do I need to maybe ask for, wanted to ask for approval to. Uh, purchase these radios, so I guess I will make a motion for approval to purchase these radios, not to exceed, uh, three hundred dollars.
Just what, what fund is this coming, this is out of your? Funds.
Nathan, you, what fund were you thinking of when we asked you that?
Well, Nathan's looking that up, I'm a little confused, what, who are we gonna come in, this is one radio?
No, it's six, sorry, it's six radios, yay.
Oh, six, okay.
I got my own. And I think it's important while he's looking that, and relative to that, we are very much, um. A, we have a very much a specific role to play in an emergency, really, the lead is, is, I mean, Chris and. The fire department and those folks are really leading it.
So to, to tie. Group here together.
Right, but it is, it's to tie.
Catch you, Chris, in the fire department, or?
No, no, it'd be totally different radio system, right?
Okay, there was no way we could afford a new system.
Uh, this is for us, you know, somebody, guys across the lake, or, yeah, something going on. Um, again, assuming in the worst case that we are.
Is this a BHF by chance?
It's actually a MERS, so someone has a BHF, it's BHF is what it is, so, yeah, so Herb did a really good job of giving emails. A lot of selections, so they looked at all the selections. We talked, yeah, email that and we're whole bit, well.
Since to go out at LIT capital machines and equipment, we have plenty of money there.
What's the phone number, I think, it's what Dan's asking. What is the fund number, I think is what Dan's asking.
Two, two, four, zero, 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 one, four, five, one.
Thank you, Brian, it wasn't. Two, two, four, zero, 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 one, four.
One, four, five, one, dot, zero, one, four.
Okay, so Bert, I think you are in the middle of making a motion.
I'll make a motion, uh, I can even read the number if you'd like me to, um. I, uh, I do, I'd like to make a motion to approve purchase of emergency portable radios. Um, not to exceed three hundred dollars, um, from budget two, two, four, zero, zero, one, four, five, one, dot, zero, one, four.
We have a motion, could I have a second, please?
This is being, I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, hearing none, motion carries. Are the radios in stock, I mean, is, are they? Okay, so we will now move to the resolution zero seven dash two, zero, two, five appropriations and tax rates. And Nathan, I believe you're gonna present this.
All right, this.
And could we move it to the audience, let's see. Okay, you know, you gotta present, move the slides.
All right. So as you're looking at this, everybody, the adopted version right here is the amount of money that we're gonna spend potentially next year. The second line is the adopted tax rate, these are the money that we're gonna bring in from tax. These are the totals, right here down here on the bottom. So I'm gonna read this now, so. Being ordained, resolved by the Town of Clear Lake Town Council, that for the expenses of Clear Lake Civil Town for the year ending December thirty first. Two thousand twenty, the twenty sixth, the sums herein specified are hereby appropriated in order to set apart. Out of the several funds herein named, and for the purposes herein specified, subject to the laws governing the city. Such sums herein appropriated shall be held to include all expenditures authorized to be made during the year. Although otherwise expressly stipulated and provided for by law. In addition, for the purposes of raising revenue, to meet the necessary expenses of Clear Lake Civil Town, the property tax levies and property tax rates. As herein specified are included herein. Budget form four B for all funds must be completed and submitted in manner prescribed by the Department of Local Government Finance. This ordinance resolution shall be in full force and effect. From and after its passage and approved by the Town of Clear Lake Town Council.
Thank you, Nathan, um, anybody have any questions for Nathan? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve as presented, keep in mind, please state the resolution number. And title in your motion.
All right, so I'll make a motion. To accept as regularly ordinance or resolution for appropriations and tax rates, resolution number oh, seven. Dash two, zero, two, five.
Thank you, we have a motion, could I have a second?
Sure, I'll second the motion.
We have a motion and a second, um, because this is budget, let's do a roll call vote, please.
Yes. Uh, in this matter, Molly, what, what say you? Brett Slusser, what say you? Dan Ripley, what say you? Bert Elliott, what say you? And George Schinkel, what say you? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Nathan, Dan, and George for your work on the budget, much appreciated. Here we will now move to item number nine, council reports, and Nathan, you're gonna be presenting. With the financial report.
Yes, uh, my financial reports are on file, appropriation revenue and fund reports. Um, you guys have any questions, let me know. It's been a busy month and, uh, next month and a half will probably be very busy as well, just, you know.
Any questions for Nathan on the financial reports? Okay, we will now turn it over to Chris, that's Marshall's right, Bert, Nathan, if you could.
For the month of September, uh, I drove a hundred eighty miles. Sorry, we worked a hundred eighty hours, we drove six hundred sixty two miles, and then we had eight hours, uh, of my, my aquatic. Hours, which were basically, uh, getting the boat out, cleaning it up and getting it put away, uh, to the water level that we currently have. Um, we had one bin checked and we reformed, uh, there's four traffic violations, zero boat violations, zero golf cart violations. Uh, police department had three agency assists and two unsecured premises. The sheriff's office did not respond to the town of Clear Lake at Alder in the month of September. And sheriff's office in County Clear Lake. Had a total of thirteen calls, it was one disorderly, four property damage crashes, uh, they're all from deer. Uh, Wilford, that, I think, two perflung deer crashes, uh, two invasive privacy, one medical call and one operating speed law. The only other thing I have, I'm not sure if they've been in the packet, I know we're talking about this, um. I think they see information earlier, we passed it out, the, uh. William Newsman's longer presentation, uh, brought to me clearly, police department, um. I know I've talked to Brett and Molly about, uh. Not replacing him currently, the other deputies, uh, have agreed to absorb his hours. So far, they have done so, since he, uh, submitted his letter of resignation. Um, one thing I really need is just whether I'm gonna accept his resignation from the police department or not.
Okay, so let's, um, Brett, would you like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to accept Williams' resignation from the Clear Lake Police Department.
We have a motion, could I have a second?
This is Bert, I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, hearing none, motion carries, yes, council will approve that.
Yes, it was now already, uh, make sure that that patient is first to file, please.
Oh, excellent, thank you. All right, um, anything, oh, you know what, one thing, Chris, if you wouldn't mind, just sharing what the new dispatch number is.
So for anybody that had the dispatch number in their phone program then, um, they have been away. With that number, so if you need to reach dispatch, it's the two, six, oh, six, six, eight, one, thousand. And then you have to dial the extension of forty, thirty, or forty, forty, to get it through. The old number is no longer that. And I think Jennifer put that out in the newsletter already as well, so.
And she did send out a reach alert on it too, so. Anything else for Chris? All right, we'll turn it over to Brett for the fire report.
Okay, for the month of September, the Town of Clear Lake had a total of five incidences, including two mutual aids. And we had a regional total of eleven. Um, mutual aids in September were neutral comparing twenty five to twenty four. The town of Clear Lake increased various calls in September with five in twenty twenty five versus four in twenty twenty four. Clear Lake Township increased its various calls in September with six in twenty twenty five versus three in twenty twenty four. As a result, the regional totals increased to eleven and twenty five versus seven in twenty twenty four. We go to the monthly summary. You can see that month to month, our regional totals were the same. And, or sorry, month to month, Town of Clear Lake totals were the same, we did see a slight increase in regional totals. All files are. Or all reports are on file, let me know if you have any questions, please.
Anybody have any questions for Brett? No, thank you, we will now turn over zoning administrator, um, report, we'll have Jim Pogel present that. All right, thanks, Jim, for being here.
You're welcome, the zoning report for the month of September. Um, we had, uh, an additional seven, uh, requests come in and. Um, in there, we will, I've also indicated open requests. Um, and what I have currently done is someone that comes in and requests. Information on an ILP or property, indicate that this is coming in and it's open. Uh, we did not have a status of, I mean, we had a status of. Uh, in process or signed off. And what we did not know really was how many we had in the queue that were needing to be worked before it actually, uh. Made it through, so a lot of work was being done, uh, by the previous zoning administrators. Uh, in prepare, in preparation to get the ILP executed, uh. And we're catching up on that, so if you notice the third, uh, the third mark under the case number is blank. And that link indicates for that month that someone requested the information, but it's not come through with it yet, so that's in progress. Um, this time of year is picking up, I have a lot of work coming up in October. Uh, people have left the lake in September and now they all want their work done, they start in October time frame. So along with that, uh, I had, but we had no, um. ILPs not required, we had nothing denied, and we had no letters of, um, non objection during the month. Those also are things that take time for the zoning administrator that we were not previously reporting on. But I thought it was important that, you know, at least we have some idea of, of additional activity. And that really is the, the ILP volumes, uh, BZ meeting was canceled, uh, this month, there was nothing on the, the agenda. And from a planning commission standpoint, the Clintery Corporation, the minor subdivision is in process. I will say that we have it ninety nine percent complete as of tonight, we're waiting on one more signature. Uh, and there'll be a positive, uh. Report next month, uh, in, in the October meeting, we should get that done. And then the administrative subdivisions, just to kind of let you know that, you know, these are things that are being worked, again, it is. Uh, a lot of times, these are only reported when it was completed. But I thought it was important to understand how many are in the queue and where they're located and what's going on. And these administrative subdivisions, because that is now a requirement for any ILP work that's being done. Um, this will give us a great indicator for future ILPs that are gonna be coming in, especially the larger ones where. We're merging parcels, uh, to have one large property, that's pretty indicative of a remodel or a complete demo. And rebuild.
I just, um. And not to put you, um, off guard, I, it's, and I know we've talked about it. Is I was asked, what about some of these, um, projects that are going on past like the ILP? Timeframe, due date, the expiration. And if you could talk a little bit, I know Plan Commission has, you know, a, you've got a policy or. Process in place, so if you could just share that.
Sure, sure.
Please.
Um, actually, we have a meeting, um, in two weeks for Plan Commission. Uh, and one of those items is on the agenda, typically, when an ILP is issued, it's supposed to begin within ninety days. And we have found that that always has not been the case, so we had some ILPs that I found were. Laying eleven months before the project had started. Um, we have a number of ILPs that, for some very large homes, they're valid for one year. Uh, that some of these homes are taking significantly more time than, than one year to complete. So on the agenda for the next meeting is to talk about those, those items. Um, and it's, you know, what do we do for the renewal, what happens at the ninety days? Uh, and how do we make sure that we're tracking this in some way? Again, we've had dates put in, and the dates only say this is when I authorized it, but there was no tickler that said, in ninety days, I need to follow up. So those are little things that are being put in to help improve the process, uh, along the way and. And have all of this documented so that if someone else were to step in, they could sit down and, and they would understand. What's going on at any point in time and why decisions were made.
Excellent, thank you very much, anybody have any other questions for Jim?
Well, I'll just make a comment, but, um, uh, expressing my appreciation for him to continue to sit in the seat. Of the zoning administrator. Um, he has been there now long enough to have a, a really detailed appreciation as to. What the process is, where the holes are, the deficiencies, um, I think, uh. The executive team is also working quite well together, starting to de-convolve the position. And looking at ways to outsource pieces of it so that we can drive consistency and results, et cetera, so. It's largely because of his leadership that we're able to, to, to make strides that I think you're gonna start to see going forward here.
Excellent, thank you, Jim, right to Dan and Indiana, I think it's also in the executive committee, so. Kudos to you all for thinking, you know, not just short term, but long term and what's best for the community.
Yeah, just kind of piggybacking off of that, it sounds like we've got a little update on. The way you guys are viewing his own administrator's position, do we have any further updates on the position being filled? I'm starting to get some calls asking if it's okay to hand my number out because. They can't get an inspection scheduled or they can't get a chance to talk to the zoning director.
Uh, yeah, well, number one, that, that's news to me, cause, um, I do, I've returned every call, every email. Those that are coming in, I have the phone. Okay, and, um, so that would be helpful to know, um, I also, having that. Um, this is a five day a week job, uh, but it's not my full time job. Uh, so I have put down and, and made note that there will be office hours, uh, Monday, Tuesday, and Thursday. That's been communicated, but if there are other ways of communication in the meantime, those are usually tended to. Um, as far as inspections and such, um. Those were done, you know, when they were requested, they come in, they're, they're done within a short time. Um, I, I will defer a little bit on the zoning administrator position. As we're having, we're scheduled to have a, a, a meeting next Tuesday to talk about the strategic component of. The position, what it should be from a plan commission standpoint, and I don't wanna get ahead of that meeting, but as soon as we have. That information done available and confirmed by the plan commission, more than happy to share that with, with this team.
Thank you, thank you, Jim, and, and then one thing that I wanna add to, because I think we have contractors and some residents that think they can walk in the doors and they're gonna get an answer like this. Thank you, thank you, Jim. And, and then one thing that I wanna add to, because I think we have contractors and some residents that think they can walk in the door and they're gonna get an answer like this. Um, they probably aren't. And if they had in the past, they were very fortunate, but I would hazard a guess, there's no place they can go and walk in and get an answer the same day. Um, so I think sometimes expectations need to be more realistic. Um, so, yeah, but. So I, I think you're doing a brilliant job, I, I just think sometimes we need to. When we get the calls too, we need to just remind people that, you know what?
We were also told that we were gonna get a, you know, this meeting.
Okay, I know, no, no, I'm all silver, no, I'm just saying in general. So any other questions for Jim?
Uh, it's a little off topic, but either Jim or Guy. Uh, relative to what appears to be an emerging major project on the South Shore. But, uh, there's a house, you know, on the South Shore, just by, I don't know, the creek that runs, runs out.
Cyrus.
You know.
Cyrus.
So, yeah, there is a mega pile of. At least twenty four inch drainage, and the idea, is that for us, or?
No, the homeowners are replacing the culvert from the edge of the asphalt to the lake.
Down in the creek?
No, from, from. From the solidly lake drive, the north side of it to the lake is being replaced.
Okay.
It's all on the lakeside.
Yeah, where the existing culvert.
Yes, okay, all right. Those culverts have failed and those culverts are the property of those two homeowners.
Yes, okay. Thank you.
Thank you, God.
Thanks, Peter, if I see you. Something like that, or not, not knowing where it's going.
Any other questions for Jim?
Thanks.
We will now turn it over to Guy for the superintendent's report.
Um, I worked a total of a hundred and seven, six and a quarter hours last month. And it's sixty eight locates, I had one alarm call. I did not replace any, replace or repair any ground units, and I did not send any, set any up last month. I had nineteen pipes on hand, twelve were still boxed. And I don't have any waiting on repair right now, I have some that I need to evaluate to see if they are repairable or age wise. Average daily flow was forty four, one of two. Uh, sewer truck drove a hundred and fifty three miles and the dump truck, thirty three miles.
Any questions for Guy? I just wanna say, um, Guy has been the liaison with Frontier, I know things did not start off. Um. In the way that we would like, but Guy has been having weekly meetings with the Frontier crew.
Daily.
Okay, daily, um, I knew at least we were having, you know, meetings on Monday, so I just wanna thank you and encourage you to. You know, stay with them, um.
East, East Clear Lake should be finished, if, if it's not finished today, it'll be finished tomorrow. Then they've got a couple, uh, they've got a bore on South Clear Lake at Fountain Beach. And then they're gonna move back to the North Shore and get that cleaned up.
Uh, okay, I was gonna ask, did they, they. Repair and re, bring back to. The way, the way they should have been, those.
Are you talking about?
Yeah, I'm not gonna say. Restoration, the restoration.
They have restored. Part of it, not all of it, because they still have work to do in the area. It didn't make sense for them to put grass seed and straw down and then tear it right back up, so.
Yeah, if you could just stand on the restoration, that would be helpful.
I watched them today. Because we, it wasn't their fault, it wasn't my fault, they. One of my grinder wires that came from Clear Down by the lake, there was a coil of wire. Laying underground. And when they went through with the board bit, I traced it out and I was, they were that far away from it boring and they caught the edge of it. So we had some repair work to do there, but, so I was there all, I was there until Friday today repairing that. Um, cause I had to worry about NIPSCO to de-energize it. But the, uh, I watched them doing the restoration work and as they started to dig the holes, they actually dig under the side about four inches, lift it all out. Set it on one piece of plastic. Then they dig your hole, put that dirt on another piece of plastic. Set their stuff in and do their connections. Put the dirt back in that will fit, or. If they're putting one of those, uh, I call them coffins, they call them flower pots in. The excess dirt they take with them, they don't try to scatter it out in the yard. So in the spots where they were following and digging, everything's going right back in, they're tamping it. Putting the sod back in, raking it out, putting grass seed and straw in the top of it.
Thank you, Ben.
So.
Excellent, we'll now move to council member reports, and I think we're gonna start with Brett, cause, um, you were at Region Three A, you were. Reaching.
Was it like after the last?
Yeah, it was, you, I'm just going off, but you had mentioned you were.
Oh, yeah.
Gonna have that, so you wanted to start with you, I know, it probably seems like a long.
No, yes, no, I, I'm shaking my head because it was another one on municipalities buying properties and. The way to turn around and make those more enticing to everyone else. And there was. No. Advantage for. The town of Clear Lake, however, we are supporting Region Three A and still attending the meetings, cause the. The, you, you, you better go, Molly, the, it seems like the participation. Is not what it was even when I first started doing. So I do wanna continue to, to support, support cause, because. If it's once a quarter and one quarter is something valuable that I can bring back and, and share with everybody here. I'm all for it, unfortunately, the time before, yeah, and the time before, we were all like, well, what about the utilities? And they're like, oh, you gotta get down with steak.
Yeah, thank you very much, Brett, much appreciated.
I don't have anything.
Dan?
Yeah, I'm happy to report that the, uh, backup generator, uh, team, uh, held its, uh. Architecture review last Tuesday. Um, and, uh. The, uh. The review basically went through. Uh, why we need backup power, it was based off of the. Kind of the operations plan, already, uh, we're getting used out of that, uh, Burke's efforts there. And, uh, we put together a set of operational criteria. Uh, and also, uh, levels of compliance for each of those. And we evaluated three architectures. Um, and scored and added up the scores and, uh, the team. Uh, the project team is recommending architecture two, which consists of. Essentially, a single higher power generator. With portable connection. And I would like to, um, make a motion for council, um, that, uh. Um. We proceed with the team's recommended architecture into a detailed design phase.
Great, we have a motion and, uh, entertain a second.
Yeah, this is George, I was at the architectural meeting, uh, went extremely well, very informative, and I second motion.
We have a motion and a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, hearing none, motion carries, Stan, thank you very much, thank you.
Yeah, and I'll say, uh, thanks for those who attended, and one of the action items that we took was to. Uh, add some, an additional sense of urgency in getting the work completed. Uh, John actually attended and gave us that action, whether he knew it or not, I should be glad it's happening. And, uh, we're doing that, so thank you.
Anything else, anything on the road, no? Waiting, right?
Uh, we are planning to, uh, start the air relief valve work. Uh, we've gone through some of the contractual, uh, specific, we're getting ready to turn that on, so.
Well, thank you, George.
Uh, as you may or may not know, uh, this, uh, going forward, I'm working on the, uh, salary, wage, and benefit, uh. Ordinance, and that should be ready for a December review.
Some, thank you. I don't have anything else, um, we will now open it up for general discussion and public comment. John, Judy, Kathy, Brenda, anything?
General, I'm Joe, say, again, I congratulate you working as a team, it's amazing to see the depth of. Time that each one of you will put into your own areas. I know that that is out of family time and personal time. Most all pleased that, at least, I have a sense of urgency out of all this stuff, I've been, um, emergency stuff. Over my years in other towns, and thank you for following through, uh, on that. And both of, well, the whole, whole team here. I'm interested in reading the document which we have, and giving maybe any, any thoughts or whatever. But I'm tickled with this going ahead, I can't believe a radio at fifty dollars is going to do much, uh, each, and so. I'm a little bit. Put it back by that, because we know that the unexpected always comes when you don't want it. And you have to do something beyond what you think you can or should do, so I'm encouraging perhaps. Well, I'm gonna read it first, then we'll talk to you more on that. But thank you for counsel, for work and achieving.
Thank you. Thanks, John, and like I said, you know, this is a document that we're gonna continue to work on, so happy to have any of your input.
I would just say that I. Attended another. Um, meeting before this one. And I'm very much impressed with what you two. In comparison.
Thanks for being here, Jim, you're glad, glad to see you here. Kathy, Brenda. All right, so with that being said, I will entertain a motion for adjournment at eight oh one. Motion. And a second.
George, can I second it?
We have a motion and a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, hearing none, motion carries.